Being 7:00 PM, I will call the meeting to order. Have roll call please.
Mr. Trager.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson. Mr. Galloch.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Work.
Here.
Mr. Split.
Here.
We have court.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Bible says, unless the Lord guard the city, the guard keeps watch in vain. So we acknowledge and honor the Lord who is above all. I am reading from First Chronicles, chapter 29, 11, three verses. Yours, O Lord, are the greatness, the power, the glory, the victory, and the majesty. For all that is in the heavens and on the earth is yours. Yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Riches and honor come from you, and you rule over all. In your hands are power and might, and it is in your hands to make great and give strength to all. And now, our God, we give thanks to you and praise your glorious name. Amen.
Thank you.
All right. First item is to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Been moved by Ben, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Right into the action items for tonight. First item is Watson Street Festive Lighting Project. This is being proposed by Ripon Main Street, adding some festive lighting on the 200 and 300 blocks of Watson Street, going across the roads. Craig, would you like to come up and give an overview of the project?
Hello, I'm Craig T. Bond, Ripon's downtown manager, and you need the address. It's 567 Watson Street. I've been working with some of the downtown property owners in the 200 block and 300 block, and we've been researching different lighting options, things we can do. After a visit to downtown Wausau, we saw their lighting example. Wausau's a little bit different than Ripon. They run their festive lights at the center of the street. We're looking to run our wires across the street at a 90-degree angle to the facades. So it'd be very similar to what in your packet. It's Fourth Street in downtown Cleveland. Just it won't be that many lines. We met with, I met with Tim Saul, Chief Saul, and they'd like to have two and a half parking stalls in between each line. So that would eliminate about half of the lines that we had had spec'd. So roughly five guide wires per block.
Thank you. Any questions for?
And maybe, so I guess one more detail too. The height of the guide wires, these would be approximately 24 feet above the pavement. So there should be plenty of room. We wouldn't have to worry about vehicles coming through. But this would put it above the second-story windows, so it won't obscure the view from an apartment or from somebody's space. So I could talk all day about festive lighting if you want, but it'd put you all to sleep.
Jim?
Two questions. One, this will be in addition to the facade lights that are already there?
Yeah.
And then number two, timeframe, what are you thinking of festive lighting? Is this Christmas season, Dickens', or is this all you?
No, 365.
Okay, thanks.
So just something to attract more attention as people are either driving through Ripon or, you know, just Ripon's that cool city with the lights. So the festive lights will be larger and brighter than, it's called a Festoon-style light bulb, which is larger than the C9s, the smaller Christmas lights that we have on top of buildings. Approximately 35 bulbs per guide wire. There's about 70 feet from facade to facade, so.
Did you have a second question, Jim?
I have a second question.
Oh. John?
So I told you I'd put you to sleep.
Are you looking for donations, or are you going to take the money out of Main Street or the bid?
Several property owners have already talked about donating to this, and we do have some money from our GoFundMe campaign that was done years ago, and I think we would launch another GoFundMe campaign to make up the difference.
Good.
So the goal would be to do it without Main Street funds.
Are we approving because it's over the right-of-way? Are we approving the festive downtown project? What are we actually approving as an action item for the project?
I'd say over the right-of-way is probably exactly why we're involved. I don't think we were overly involved when they put them on top of the buildings. I don't recall that being the issue.
Yeah.
Individual property owner choosing this is because you're crossing over the right-of-way. Now, you mentioned, just I guess for sake of understanding, this is above where the apartments are, but what's the timing of this thing? When does it go on and when does it go off?
Probably it'd be similar to the lights on top of the buildings. We'd have to work that out with timers, but probably turning on during the winter, four. I think we run four till 11 during the winter. If the timers are easily accessible, then we'd probably back that off to like a, perhaps a six or seven until 11. The goal is to have them on when people are out and about, whether that's picking that 11 o'clock. So if you're a late start with the campus theater, you get out, they'd still be on.
I just, the concern would be for property owners, for hotel occupants, if the light is anyway intrusive into the building.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's going off and they know it's going off, then that helps.
Yeah.
Eventually, there's no light coming in if there isn't.
Yeah, there'll be more light coming in from the streetlights than there will be from these festive lights.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Dave?
Maintenance-wise, are you guys taking care of everything? I mean, notice like even on the side buildings now, there's a lot of lights on.
Yep, that's, it's an annual thing, so, you know, with the lights on top of the buildings, we don't do it during winter when it's slippery, but once, yeah, so. These lights are, from what I've seen in other communities, they're a little bit more dependable. Even though we have LEDs on top of the buildings, they're not, the incandescents work much better. These, the small little bulbs are so sensitive with the temperature. These seem to work much better.
All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's neat to see the response as far as, there was someone from the public that came during our budget hearing to ask about lighting downtown. Now, I'm not sure she had this in mind, but the point is, here you are coming with an idea that will enhance, I believe, our downtown, as you said, 365 days a year. And so I may want a creative way to respond to people wanting that. And as you know, you know, I work at the college and we have alumni weekend coming up in August, and I hear so much buzz about people saying, have you seen Ripon's historic downtown lately? You know, I'm going to come back just so I can see the historic downtown too. So on that note, do you, I think this is pretty neat for our town. Do you have any plans for kind of promoting this in the area as look at Ripon's doing? Maybe we can get some buzz out of this.
You know, I think the biggest thing is just having documentation, having those images that we can either, either video or photographs that we can use in marketing. So, you know, people will, you always have to have an identifiable feature for a community, and lights on top of the buildings are somewhat of that, but this is just to, you know, crank that whole image up a bit.
And I also want to add too, thank you for saying that you work with, for your chief, chief Saul. Because I think, and it sounds, obviously you're going on the record saying that you are abiding by his recommendations. Because obviously, it would be really hard as a council to approve anything if, of course, we weren't safety first. But you're assuring us that you've worked with him and he approves of, and you're abiding by what he recommended.
Mm-hmm.
Super, thank you.
Yep.
Move or approve?
Second.
Motion by Alan. I think I heard Paige first for the second. Any further discussion? So all those in favor of approving the festive lighting over Watson Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. Moving on then. Next item is a resolution in support of sufficient state aid to cover VSP flat rate reduction. Adam, would you like to give an explanation to this?
Yeah, so I think the first time ever maybe, the Ripon Community Media Committee has a resolution that they wanted to forward to the common council for consideration. Basically, this is just requesting that during the state's budget process, our state legislature look into fully funding VSP fees collected by, that's collected by, or fully funding VSP fees, because there's a rate of reduction that's happening. So as people are unplugging and not paying cable bills, and as there's been a state law change that reduces the amount that cable providers are paying the city of Ripon, there is a stepped approach to getting state aid to cover that cost. So for example, just to give you the numbers, in 2018, we collected just shy of $104,000 in VSP, or in video service fees. In 2019, it was just over $102,000, so we saw a little reduction. Already this year, we have seen a reduction. The first quarter payment was just shy of $19,000. So that times, times four is $80,000, say, or less than $80,000. Add in our state aid for the year of around $20,000, we're still short $5,000 to $10,000. That's going to happen and continue to happen unless there is, at a state level, a better commitment to fund the state aid to municipalities to cover the cost of the reduction in the fees that are coming in from cable providers. So this is not really tying us to anything. This is just saying, hey, we see this happening, and we are asking that our legislatures look at this, because quite frankly, as we continue to see a reduction in the collected fees and no growth in the state aid, will continue to not only impact the operation of the cable channel, it will impact the operation of the city, because if you're not aware, a portion of the cable fees are forwarded to the general fund for operating. So it is not like state aid in a traditional sense. This is kind of a separate thing that has happened. And the media committee has, I think, talked about this sort of for years, and this is the first thing, I think, to really bring this forward as awareness to the council as well that this is happening. And it's of concern, because, you know, you continue to lose out on those fees, you could have budget implications in the next couple of years for the cable channel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? Go in.
I'll just add, as a member of the Ripon County Media Committee, Adam, you couldn't have said it better. Thank you for that overview. And I think I'll just add a couple of things for people that are listening and they're wondering sort of what is it called, the action? You know, it means that if you feel called, to contact your local representative and say about how important this is. You know, we've been seeing a great increase in a number of people following on social media, our Facebook page, Ripon Channel, the YouTube page, you know, covering local sports, local arts, getting local voices out in the community. So we're hearing a lot of positive feedback that this is good for the community. And I guess a note to our fellow council members, as Adam said, knowing that if we want to continue to see the quality programming and really the service for our community, we may need to be looking at where we're going to come up with funds in future years. So just something to be aware of.
Thank you.
Any financial implications that are going to hurt the city if we go on forward with this?
No, no, nothing. I mean, we're already, to be honest, we, we're already in the hole this year. So when we budgeted, I believe, $103,000 this year, that should have been more like $98,000. You know, so we're already seeing, whether it's cutting the cord or the state, you know, changes to the laws or not enough state aid, we're already going to be coming up short. So nothing, basically what happens if this passes here, we will forward it to our representation at the state level and just say, just try to get them aware of the issue.
Would move to approve.
A second.
Been moved by Ben, seconded by Jolene. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution in support of sufficient state aid to cover VSP flat rate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Our last action item is an ordinance for lead service line replacement. Adam?
Yeah, so this is sort of a follow-up to a couple, about a month ago or so, when the city authorized us to apply for the private lead service lateral program through the Department of Natural Resources. One of the things that's recommended with that application is the creation of a lead service line replacement ordinance. It's not mandatory, but it's recommended, and in the current situation we are in, I felt it was appropriate to bring this forward, mostly because there are two things happening. A road project that is fairly significant for our community. The second is the possibility that funds from the state, the DNR, as well as rescue plan dollars are allowable expenses for lead service lateral replacements, okay? So this ordinance basically goes into effect and would say, when we are doing a road project and we notice while digging, you have a lead service lateral. In the past, there was no requirement or no mechanism to tell the property owner to replace it while we're there digging. So there are stretches of road that have been done in the past where some people said yes and some people said no to replacing their lead service lateral. Well, if you are only there every 40, 50, 60, 70, 80 years, you can see where that becomes problematic. So when we are doing these more large-scale replacement projects for the utility, having an ordinance like this in place really kind of sets that tone of saying, yes, we're there and we want to work with you, whether it's funded through the project or funded through a separate program, you know, you need to replace it, because we can't wait another 60 years. The second thing is, is when we get funds in, which we will likely get from the DNR, as well as rescue plan dollars can go toward this, for the first time, we may end up having money in the bank to address this problem. So when we identify a lead service lateral, we now can go to the property owner and say, we have money, will you please work with us to replace this now? Because it's not only benefiting us, it's benefiting you as the cost is being covered, okay? All of this is on a timeline agreed to by the utility and the property owner. It is not an immediate forceful ordinance that says, if we know you have lead, you have to get it out, and it's on you to do that. That is not the direction we wanted to go with our residents, because it can be a costly venture. So this is just more or less the first, the second step, I would say, in dealing with this issue. The first is applying for funding. Next is an ordinance that gives us the tools to be able to replace them in the field when we discover them or when we have funding. And third will be a developed lead service program that me and the utility staff are currently working on to implement for this year and into future years. So, yes.
So to make this clear for the public, so they all watch this, it sounds like if we pass this ordinance and the funding does get approved, if it has to be replaced, it comes at no cost to them.
Yes, so that's the whole idea with the private lead service lateral program. Would be up to, say, $5,500 or $6,000, whatever it is, the city would reimburse for that cost or pay a plumber directly. So we have to work out those program details, but really the ordinance is setting the tone for when we do have funds to get people a little more, you know, energized to doing this, because right now, there's nothing on the books. They can just continue to say, no, I don't want to replace it because I don't want to tear up my yard.
Yeah.
Well, okay, that's, that doesn't, you know, we need to get, we need to start dealing with this issue because it has long-term health consequences. And, you know, as long as we have them in our system, the DNR is going to be, you know, looking at us, so.
So how many, we do know how many lines there are, right?
Oh, don't even go. We have submitted a list of approximately 40 locations to the DNR today as part of the grant project for them to do a review on. That will be enough to start with.
Okay.
We have another, I would say, 40 or so that we are going to investigate.
Okay.
So we have to basically get into homes and look at, you know, materials and just double-check, because over time, some of the things, how we're managing it right now are, you know, cards and things from a very, very long time ago. So things change without us knowing, and staff changes. So some of that institutional knowledge, and obviously with having a lion on it, there's been not great continuity from the past. So a lot of this is getting in and investigating as well. So, but there were 40 that, approximately 40 that were submitted right off the bat.
All right, but there will be more.
There's likely more.
Okay.
We don't, you don't know until sometimes you're right there, you're in the basement or you're digging.
Right.
You know, so.
All right.
Jolene?
When I saw this, I wanted to make sure that the water utility had indeed been working with this, with you, Adam, and I talked to Jim Jacobs today of our local water utility, and he did confirm that he is appreciative of working with you. They have been, you know, they, he says that there are absolutely no drawbacks. This is good for the city. And I did learn to this point of how do you know if you have lead? So he looked at my property, and it was on a card, and he said, oh, you know, I mean, it says you don't, but again, to your point of what you just explained, if you want, we can come up this afternoon. We can take a check. It took, it was so simple. And so I just want to let people know that you can call a water utility, you can ask them, and they'll look at the records for your property. It was free for them to check, thank goodness I don't have lead or galvanized, and that was a very simple process. And he also explained to me, I mean, look, here's the, what is the alternative if we don't replace lead? Or do we want chemicals in our water so that, you know, the lead is not, I mean, that is the alternative here. And so I think that it makes so much sense, not only economically, but for the health of our residents, that we move forward with this.
Financially, it just makes sense to save our city some money and our neighbors. So if you guys are okay with it, I'd be so moved to put this in the motion and say okay. So I motion it.
That's been moved by Ben, seconded by Jolene. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yes, there is lead service in the city, but to also ease concerns that I've heard and read and things, it's not, the entire city all has lead service. So unfortunately, I think sometimes they hear this at a meeting like this, and the public hears, lead service, we all have. To Jolene's point, there is records, there is ways to research it, also building standards. I don't know the exact years, and I apologize, but there's, after such a year, you could not have lead service anymore. So, and obviously new structures, if your house is built in 2000, you don't have a lead service. I don't know what the exact year is, but Water Service would be able to talk to you about that as well, which has Chris down at the water department. So to all of these tensions out there in society, this isn't a rampant thing going all over town. 2,800 homes all have. But it is a serious issue at the same time, and we need to do it. So if you have questions, concerns, again, I'll echo Jolene's point. Get hold of the water department, and they'll work with you to then help down the road as well.
Well said, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Hearing no further comments or questions. Could we get a roll call please?
Sure. I'm going to put my paper. What am I going to do with it? Sorry, I don't have it memorized.
Just go around.
Mr. Trager.
Aye.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Galloch.
Aye.
Mrs. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Morrison.
Aye.
Mr. Work.
Aye.
Mr. Split.
Aye.
Remembrance. All right, moving on. Project updates and staff reports. Adam?
On the water utility side, just wanted to let you all know that Chris Laveras has submitted his letter signifying his intent to retire from the city in August. So we will begin the process for replacement of that position. So thank you to Chris and his many years of service to the city of Ripon. And we will, like I said, in the coming months, open that up and start taking applications in and finding the replacement. Board review, June 7th, 4 to 6, just as a reminder. And that is everything I have. I do not have anniversaries, because we did May's and April. Sorry.
All right. COVID works.
I'm good.
This department, all right. I don't have any appointments tonight. I just do want to communicate the importance of getting the vaccination for the COVID-19. Currently, Fond du Lac County is sitting at approximately 35% vaccination, and Green Lake County or neighboring county is slightly better at roughly 37%. That's nowhere near enough to hit herd immunity at at least 70%, so we're about halfway there. So please, if you haven't already, go out, get vaccinations. They are readily available. Check with your local pharmacy or doctor's office to get that. Otherwise, stay safe, stay healthy. Any comments or future items from council members? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to move adjourn.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Paige. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn at 7:28. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.